To grow and help our people to recognize that as Lu, as Minister Priscilla always says, she talks about having the power. She talks about, we have the power. And I do believe that we have the power individually. But what would happen, as Minister Dawn would say, if we would unify around the political realm? I'm gonna, I'm unified around the spiritual realm with a number of pastors that I talk to and connect with. But politically, to unify, you have Pastor Hobbs going into South Bay and Nashua Street and registering to vote men and women who are incarcerated. That's an innovation. That's happening. You have another young man from this church, when other young men are released from prison, he has gone to the prison to pick them up and take them home. He has picked up men and brought them to secure their IDs. He has helped so many men who are coming out of prison. Boston is an innovative city, and we have men and women in this town who are feeding men and women who used to be in prison. They are providing resources for them. They are providing a place for people to sleep and to live. Why not combine all of this? What would happen if our formerly imprisoned men and women, incarcerated men and women, returning citizens, if they came back to our city? And if they were educated and informed about the political process and the impact that it could have on their lives in changing legislation that... For example, I've heard people talk about probation and the rules of probation, and how difficult it is to abide by those rules and not find yourself being placed back in prison. And so those who are dealing with prison reform are trying to change some of these rules and regulations so that men and women who honestly want to stay out of jail and prison will not be thrown back in because of what the law says a ex-offender, returning citizen can do and cannot do. That needs to be addressed. So again, let me summarize this. Ron Bell and I have been thinking, processing, and believing that we could have a once-a-month political rally out of the church. Why in the church? Because we pray. Why in the church? Because we believe. Why in the church? Because the prayers of the righteous availeth much. We want to have it in the church, because the church needs to come alive. The church needs to come back from hiding around the four walls, the inside of the four walls of the church, and having services alone, but not doing anything else to enter into this 21st century with 21st century mindset, with a 21st century, uh, context. We have got to make a difference. And I believe that we can make a difference by hosting political rallies, bringing our politicians into the studio, having them speak to the issues in our town, and giving them the support they need to do the work that they need to do to change our city. How, what do you, what do you think about that? The other concern is, as many of you know, there's, there is tension at the Boston City Council. There's a lot of tension. The councilors are not seeing eye to eye now. This is not the first time that the councilors have had issues with each other. But the city councilors are just not seeing eye, eye to eye on the new district political, district maps that have been drawn and that have been approved. They are not seeing, um, eye to eye on the issues regarding the school system, the Boston Public School system. And I, I have, uh, I have a, an article, a story that came out of Fox 25 News. And the title, uh, if I can read it here, says, "Boston City Councilors Pen A Letter To Mayor Wu Calling For Metal Detectives And Police In The Schools." Several Boston City Councilors penned a letter to Boston Mayor Michelle Wu Friday, calling for metal detectors and police to be reinstated in the schools. Now, I need to correct what this reporter just said. The reporter said that there were several Boston City Councilors who penned the letter. That's inaccurate, and that's not true. There were only four city councilors who wrote the letter, and I'll, I'll name them in just a few moments. So it says that these city councilors sent a letter to the mayor saying that we need metal detectors, and we also need the police to be reinstated back to the schools, in the schools. In a statement on Councilor Erin Murphy's Twitter page, "The group consisting of Murphy, Ed Flynn, Michael Flaherty, and Frank Baker called for safety measures in order to curb a rising trend of harassment and violence in the school." And the reason why I felt it was important to correct what the beginning of the article said, when it said that several Boston City Councilors, is that it's important that you know that there were only four city councilors, Erin Murphy, Ed Flynn, Michael Flaherty, and Frank Baker, who, who wrote the letter and signed it and sent it. What's significant of those four individuals sending that communication? What is significant, and I'm gonna read the letter to you in a moment. What's significant is that they are four of the white city councilors, four of the white city councilors. If you look at the letter and the signatures, none of the black and brown city councilors sign that letter. Now, the question is, and I don't have the answer, and I'm searching for it. The question is, did the white city councilors ask the black city and brown city councilors to join them in signing the letter? I don't have the answer. If I did, I'd tell you. Why is it that only four white city councilors sent the letter saying that they want police? And they want, they want the police, and they want metal detectors in the schools? Now, I don't know what your opinion is regarding metal detectors and policing in the school. I have an opinion, but the issue is that I believe that a lot of um, black and brown city councilors would say that they do not want metal detectors, and they do not want the police to return to the schools. Because as black people, the, the perspective is that the only way that we can go to school, the only way that we can do this is if we have metal detectors and police watching us. That creates a, a, something in the hearts and the minds of our young people regarding needing the police to always oversee us and needing metal detectors wherever we go. I, I'm not saying that's my opinion, but I'm sure that's the opinion of some of the city councilors. So there has to be a coming together, a meeting of, of these elected officials because the black and brown city councilors have a majority vote. And if they have a hearing regarding this and then a vote, the black and brown city councilors will win out, especially if they can take another white city councillor with them. So the white city councilors want law and order as it relates to metal detectors and the police back in the schools, and the black and brown city councilors, because there, there are no black and brown city councilors who signed the letter. And again, we have to find out whether or not the black and brown city councilors decided not to sign it, or whether or not they were not asked to sign the letter. Now, I have in my hand a copy of the Boston City Council letter to Michelle Wu, and I'd like to read it before your hearing. Dear Mayor Wu, Our Boston Public Schools should be a sanctuary for our students, a place where families feel safe and send their children, and teachers feel safe to go to work. No student should ever be placed in a situation with a fear for their safety or are sexually threatened. Last year's audit of the Boston Public Schools by the Department of Elementary and Secondary Education reported that the Boston Public School system does not support the physical, social, emotional well-being of all students, and does not ensure a safe environment for all students and staff. DESE found that the district system for managing and responding to these incidents is not responsive to parents' and guardians' concerns. This has led to many not believing that the Boston Public School prioritizes all students' physical, social, emotional well-being and safety. Although the school system has promised to communicate more openly when incidents happen and make bold changes to ensure that our students and staff are safe at school, the school year has not been much different. This school year has not been much different than referring to the school year of 2022. During 2021 and 2022's school year, there were 400 reported incidents of bullying and 744 sexual assaults reported. There have been many disturbing incidents of our, at our schools, and our schools, buses this year, on school buses this year. Uh, stabbings, gunshots, bullying, physical attacks, loaded guns, sexual assaults have been happening across the city. The first day back from winter break, a teacher at Young Achievers was walking a student home who was afraid for her safety. Once outside the building, they were jumped by three girls who repeatedly punched them, and as the teacher shielded the student with her body, she was kicked repeatedly. After receiving several blows to the head, the face, the teacher and student were transferred to the hospital. Reports like these are very disturbing, says the letter. With all recent tragic incidents in schools nationally, it's clear that sensible, timely communication regarding dangerous school situations is more important than ever. Now is the time for the law enforcement and Boston Public Schools to cooperate rather than alienate. We understand that there are different opinions around the roles of police officers in non-invasive technology such as metal detectors, and having police officers present in our schools. We hope you will agree that we need police, school police, to be reinstated in our Boston Public Schools for the safety of our students, our staff, and all the Boston Public School families. Signed by Erin Murphy, President Ed Flynn, Michael Flaherty, Frank Baker. So here we go. The white city councilors want metal detectors and the police back in the school, and the black and brown city councilors, their counterparts, their, their colleagues, have not signed the letter. So by not signing the letter, are the black and brown city councilors saying that they do not want metal detectors and police in the schools? Now, having police officers in, in the schools can create an environment that is not conducive for educating, uh, our students if they are the wrong type of law enforcement representatives. If the Boston City Council gets something like this approved, and they want to have the police officers reinstated, they need to be police officers who are trained to work with young people. They need to be police officers who have side-by-side with them mental health professionals, and they need to have somebody like Larry Ellison in charge of the school police citywide, because he is a trusted police officer whom I know would make sure that the police officers who were sent in place in the school would understand how young people think and would provide public safety, but at the same time would provide care and support for these young people. It would be a whole lot different if I was in a Boston Public School as a teacher, as a student, as a professional, and I knew a police officer. I knew how they treated young people. I knew that they understand that these young people are growing in their formative years and can and will make mistakes. Uh, similarly, to me understanding the same thing was I was, when I was a clerk magistrate. And I believe it's important that we have police officers who are not going to start arresting our young people for looking at them the wrong way, who are not going to simply arrest our young people because they're not listening to the police officer, uh, and not responding to their every command. We need to have the right type of police officers. If this is going to go into effect, we have to have the right type of police officers in the school system. Larry is the only police officer who is a part of that team that I know. And it's important that if metal detectors are going back in, if the school police are going back in, that it be done with an explanation as to why, and not create an environment where young people get used to metal detectors and police officers having to be everywhere that they're at, because that will prepare their minds for the school-to-prison pipeline. This is important. I, 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 I'm going to be talking to some of the black and brown city councilors, and I'm going to be asking them the question, why did you not sign on to this letter? Do you not want metal detectors and school police in, in the Boston Public Schools? Or were you simply not asked, and you didn't know that the letter was going to go to Mayor Wu? I don't have the answer for that, and I'm seeking the answer. And it's, uh, Ron and I have placed calls to our city councilors, and we're trying to schedule to meet with our councilors so that we can understand more fully where they're at. Now, let me, let me go to one more phase of this, which you may not understand, but I'm gonna go there anyway, because I think it's important that I say this. So, I've been talking to, uh, Good Morning Eric. I've been talking to some clergy. And the question that I ask them is, would you go with me to the Boston City Council and pray with all the Boston City Councilors who would be willing for us to enter their domain and to pray for them? Now, for people who do not believe in prayer, I understand why this would not appeal to you at all, and why you would think that by praying, we're just softballing a, a response to what's going on in the Boston City Council. And I beg to differ. Every Wednesday, when the Boston City Council meets, every single Wednesday when they meet, they invite a clergy from many different churches and religious persuasions to come to the Boston City Council, and they open the city council meeting with prayer. And then they pledge allegiance to the flag. Question, if prayer doesn't work, and if prayer is not important, and if prayer should not be prayed at the Boston City Council to open their meetings, then why do they do it? One could say, because it's tradition. Others could say, because it's like a lucky charm. I would say, because there are some city councilors and people who work in City Hall who believe in the power of prayer and are hoping that a prayer could open the heart and open the mind of an individual to thoughts and realities that they never opened their own mind to, because the power of God is working in the midst. I believe in prayer. The Bible says that the prayer of the righteous person availeth most. Those who have a relationship with God through Jesus, God hears their voices. And so I'm proposing that as I try to understand what's going on with the Bos, Boston City Council, I'm proposing that clergy who pray, that we should be praying for the Boston City Council, that God would intervene and open their hearts and open their minds to those things that are happening in our city, and those things that are happening in the council. Because at divided council, a council where there, there is physical altercations, a council where city councilors are perceived as insulting each other when they speak, we're not going to get a whole lot done if this is the standard and, and the stature or the, the posture, let's say, of our city councils. We're not gonna get a lot done. And our city that's perceived to be a racist city, if the black and brown and white city councilors are not working together, and I, I don't, I can't say that they're not, but there's, there's, there's smoking guns that, that says there's, there's tension. So we've gotta find a way to bridge this tension. We have to find a way to bring a resolve, because our city is in need of unity. Uh, the racial climate in our city is not the healthiest, healthiest, and could be better. And the way that that can happen is if men and women of God, not showboating, not men and women of God who just wanna talk and, and, and give speeches, but men and women of God who believe in the power of prayer, who recognize that if we pray in agreement, we could see something happen in our city. And so, um, again, I was proposing that clergy go to the city council, but I'm revising my thinking and saying, rather than trying to get all the city councilors in a room together, why not pray for them from the studio? That removes having to go to the city council and trying to get this city councillor and that city councillor. Why not just pray for them at the studio to invite clergy into the studio? We talk for 15 minutes about the concern, and then we have each pastor in the studio praying for the Boston City Council. Record the prayer and send it to the Boston City Councilers, or ask the city councilors if they want to come in via Zoom. So there are many different ways of doing this. But I believe that we as clergy ought not sit on our hands and bemoan and cry out against what's happening at the Boston City Council. We should take a spiritual stand, not religious, but spiritual stand, call on God to move over to our Boston City Council and bring peace to our council, so that if there's peace in the city council, some peace in the State House, there'll be peace in our city. And I'm hoping that many of you agree with me. And I'm hoping that many of you will, will pray. So there's, there's Eric Kennedy and Patty Lee, um, they're in the chat of Facebook, and I'm gonna ask them to respond by chat if you agree with, with me identifying Pastor Hobbs, who is a man of prayer. We need him. We need Minister Priscilla, who is a part of this team. We need Ron Bell, who prays. We need Bishop Borders, who is a praying pastor, and I can name more and more pastors. We need to put pastors in this studio, set up a microphone, and allow the pastors to go before the mic and pray for our city. I believe that by praying, the hearts and minds of our city councilors will be open. And I'm hoping that you agree with me, and I'm hoping that you will pray that this opportunity will become a reality, and then after praying, we will see some results in our city. I believe that this is the way for us to go. Because if we don't, we're going to have an ineffective city council driven by race and not united as a body of elected officials at large and, and district city councilors working together on behalf of the city. I'm gonna be putting together a communication and sending it to the Boston City Council and not asking for permission or not asking them for a date. We're gonna do it on a date that's gonna work for us as clergy, because we will send, we'll record and send this time of prayer to our city councilors. And it might be better that we have a city councillor who comes, not a councillor, a pastor who comes from the district of the city councillor that we're gonna pray for. So we pray for each city councillor individually. And then we invite a response after we send the communication to our city councilors. I'm hoping that you agree. I'm hoping that you will pray with me as I utilize this radio station to amit with the authority that it needs to speak in our city. There's no other gospel music, talk, or news, uh, radio, TV, social media, and internet station that's going to take this on the way that we're going to take it on. This is not happening in, on any other radio station, but it's going to happen here, because we believe in the power of prayer. We believe what only God can do. I'm declaring today that Minister Priscilla will make herself available and prepare herself for the challenge of praying. I decree that Ron Bell would join us, and that Ron Bell would be a part of this prayer time. I decree that, that Pastor Franklin Hobbs will make himself available and join us for this time of prayer. I decree that Pastor Borders and Bishop Dickinson will join us for this time of prayer. I decree that- I decree that these men and more women will join us as we pray in the studio for our city council. And I'm hoping that on the day that we announce that this is going to happen, that you will tune in to the station, that you will join us, and that we will be able to see the power of God move in our midst. Will you join us here on Boston Prayer Radio and TV, WBG, LP 102.9 FM Radio and Boston Black News, as we do this for the city of Boston? I'm Pastor Bruce Wall. I have to go, because I have to set up for the next broadcast at nine o'clock with Pastor Randy Neighbors and Pastor Stephen Davis. And we'll be talking more on that broadcast about where, what we're going to do, and that broadcast will be on Zoom. Thank you for listening. Thank you for being a part of us. And the next time I do this, I'll take some calls. I'm sorry for those who called in. I couldn't take your call this morning, but we will take your calls and talk about this prior to actually launching it, launching it. I'm Pastor Bruce Wall, and you're listening to Morning Inspiration Heard on the Boston Prayer Radio and TV.